Okay, you guys ready? I want to start this on time. You ready? Back to the meeting. Tell them you're ready.
And then I ran out of time and they were good. You can always review one left that you know. Don't feel bad about anyways. And they just live in my house.
All right, guys. Let's call the meetings order. It's seven thirty on December twentieth, twenty twenty-two. City Council Meeting of West Liberty. I am Mayor Ethan Anderson, and we have with us tonight. Councilmember and Mayor Protam, Kara McFerrin, Councilmember Josh Schultz, Councilmember Dana Dominguez, and Councilmember Omar Martinez. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. We do, I'm gonna ask for a motion to amend the agenda before we approve it because the item three B, the City Clerk slash Treasurer's report is not available, available to us tonight. And our City Clerk will explain that when we get to that item, but it's not available tonight. So if I could have an motion, a motion to approve with that amendment.
Yeah. Motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the agenda with the tabling of item three B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion carries four to zero. We'll move on to item three, approval of the consent agenda. This is the City Council Meeting Minutes. We won't have the City Clerk Treasurer Report, and if you could talk about that in just a second, Lee. We, we will have, and we have two beer and or liquor license applications which let's take these one at a time. We do have, we do need a little bit of discussion here. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda that we'll discuss?
Make a motion.
Yeah, aren't we supposed to approve the agenda?
You can go ahead and get a motion and a second on the table, have the discussion. And then we can let it, if there's anything that, based on discussion, that will need to be amended.
Yeah.
Then you can note it down and then bring it back for an amendment.
So we've approved the agenda as a whole, and now we're, we just need a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion from Councilmember Martinez. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, of course, without item three B. So let's, let's discuss here a little bit. One at a time. So, Lee, can you talk to us about the financials?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I shared with Mayor Anderson of the October twenty-two report during reconciliation. There is a air within our, our there's a two-part to reconciliation. There's the cash reconciliation, and that's where we tie all of our transactions back to our bank transactions. There's a second part that is the journal entries or operations of transactions within the software. And to simplify this the best, we have a transaction that occurred during the month of October for a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixteen cents, and the transaction itself has correctly gone through the cash side of our program. Unfortunately, the journal entry side is not clearing correctly. So we will have to get some assistance to get that corrected. And due to that, we cannot close that month. And so based on that, then we cannot generate a final reconciliation report. However, I did provide a preliminary revenue or cash and investment and a year-to-date treasurer's report. As I thought it'd be important for you at least to have an idea where our numbers are at. Should not significantly change because everything that pulls into those pieces have went through the general ledgers correctly. The only thing you may have is under the interest part. Because when you close out the reconciliation, that's when any interest allocations or rules will update. And when we have that completed, I'll discuss that with that report when it's prepared to be filed with them. Do you have any questions with what I provided you in the treasurer's report and the cash and investment?
Just, I guess, just simply explaining the fact that we do have, under the first line of the general fund, the amount that is listed in the parentheses is simply because of transfers, correct?
Correct. So when you're looking at your cash and investment sheet, the general fund, the zero, zero, one, that fund primarily takes in property tax revenue. And then it expenses out the general fund items such as city hall expenditures, police expenditures, ambulance expenditures, building inspection expenditures. Those items come out of that zero, zero, one. At the end of the year, throughout the year, you have a couple of events that are gonna happen that take that from that negative balance. You have property tax revenues, they come in twice. So we'll be due to have another update for that amount in March. The other thing that happens is at the end of the year, we have what's called year-end transfers. And what that is, is that in property tax, we levy for employee benefits. We levy for special fund. We have local auction sales tax revenue. And we have tip allocations that we will pull in at the end of the year for a final transfer in. The idea is that your budget that we put together last year identifies those transfers. And so we should be staying within what we've approved for those budgets. Anything outside of that, then we would do a budget amendment. And so with that said, that's why that number, for the most part, you're always gonna see it in the parentheses, looking as though it's a negative. But it's just, again, more of your expenditures are going out before we transfer back in the revenues to cover that. The other piece on your cash and investment sheet is the general fund actually makes up zero, zero, one, zero, zero, two, zero, zero, five, zero, zero. I gotta get down here. And I think from what I understand, one, three, five, so when we're going through and five hundred, those items pull into the general fund as a part of the overall balance. The other ones are going to be special funds because they're specifically allocated, and those funds cannot be touched because they have restrictions. And then you have your utility funds that, again, they're separate from the general fund. Any other questions?
That, answer your question.
Yep.
Other questions?
So you, Mr. Mayor, you have your motion and your second. I do understand that within the minutes, there is an amendment that
Oh, yes, thank you.
Yes, so.
Yes, if, do I need to ask, or I need to make a motion for?
So what we have is, we have the motion and your second on the floor. And so we can vote that down if we're done with discussion. You can go ahead and make the motion to vote that down, and then come back with a motion to amend your minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Because you can't amend within your original motion that had the amendment. So, so we can go ahead and call for a vote to approve the agenda. And then council within vote down.
So that we can add the motion.
Yeah.
He still needs to
Can we, that was my question. Can we, can we go ahead and discuss the other items there?
Absolutely.
Then we'll have one amendment to the meeting minutes, which is there, there's the erroneous line on the meeting minutes. That's a mayoral proclamation for junior achievements, which just snuck in from another meeting, I think. So that needs to figure out. But before we, before we look through those amendments, we want to talk about the beer liquor license application. So Chief Whirling, do you, what do you have to share with us about Flamas nightclub and or Flower Yard?
Flower Yard, nothing to share because this would be a first one for them. I don't foresee any issues. I think it's kind of a neat idea, actually.
And they're selling, I understand, bottles of wine, not serving.
Not serving anything.
Selling a bottle of wine and flowers.
A bottle of wine.
Right.
I guess that's kind of a cool idea.
Yeah.
But I have nothing, nothing on that one.
Okay.
Just wanted to make Mr. Mayor and Council aware. I looked up calls for service at Flamas just twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, for that coming out of the pandemic. There's some fairly normal calls, like lost property and theft. We've had a couple of intoxicated person calls, a couple called for loud music, a medical call, three fights, one of which was reportedly twenty subjects that were fighting, and a drug call where there was an allegation there were people doing cocaine off of their car to the parking lot. There was one event in October that our reserve officer was having a hard time and needed help because they were not stopping drinking after two o'clock. So he called in for some help. Jack was here, but he was on a call, so he couldn't help, so kind of come in. And they almost, I would say, a majority of their events were alcohol, so they have at least a reserve there. I know Jessica has a lot of work at that event there before, but I would say of all of our places in the city that serve alcohol, that one probably has the most the most things that happen. And that's even with somebody present for the event. It's, things are still happening, so just wanted to pass that along.
Does council have questions? Um, how is their relationship with you and the police department as a whole? Do they communicate with you? Do they?
They, they're going to, when they need somebody, they go directly to a reserve officer and let him know, and then he checks in with me about the event. There was a time when they did check in with us, and then we would have one of the reserves do it, but that has, it's since changed. I think if somebody knew doing it, but I think that was also switching over when I first started. So I don't know how, before I even got here, this is just how I, how I've always known it.
Sure. What's your recommendation to the council? Is there some action needs to be taken? Would you recommend they approve? It looks like it's, the renewal is effective on January thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. That's what it's listed here. When does this renewal happen? I wonder. City Clerk Gertz, do you happen to know when the, when the actual renewal for Flamas nightclub goes into effect?
Since one twenty-eight, yeah.
January twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-three.
Does it have another application in there?
Yes.
Oh, the application itself is right here. Good, good point.
So it's one
Thirty-first, yeah.
The twenty-third through the twenty-fourth.
Okay, January thirty-first of twenty twenty-three is when it's effective.
Yeah.
So I guess my only reason to bring that up is if council felt like anything else needed to be discussed about that, we could, we would still have time to renew it before that time, right? Or am I wrong about that? Does that throw everything off?
What happens is if you guys, let's say that you guys were going to deny it.
Yeah.
We would deny it at the local authority level. It goes to the ABD, the ABD reviews, but during that time, they still can sell alcohol until the ABD makes the final decision. So if we deny it here at local.
Yeah.
Then it goes to the ABD. The ABD would communicate with the local authority, decide if it was the right decision to move forward with the denial, or if they would put them on probation or something along those lines. They have the final say. We just have to initiate. If you guys didn't, like, if you deny it, right? I would deny it on the website, then they would take it from there and then keep in contact with us as to what happens.
So because it's all included in this consent agenda, how, if we didn't wanna, if we just wanted to vote on this only?
We can, we can break it out. We'll, to break that out if we need to, but um, so ju- just, and I'm not recommending that, by the way. I just want to understand the process more than anything. So if, if, if council did want, let's, not even this one, but if they ever wanted to deny, is there, when it says effective date, January thirty-one, is that I guess, would it be possible, possible to ever postpone one of these and then revisit it? Would be my question, I guess.
Like, you can go get it at a later date, you mean?
Right. What if you put it on next council agenda, for example? Would that be an option?
Because they, you have up until that date.
Would, up until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and it won't cause them any
Correct.
issues. Okay, that's what I was after. So if, if, if council ever wanted to do that, you know, that could be an option. That said, or I guess I'd love to hear your recommendation, Chief Whirling, if you feel like you could give one.
It sounds like they're making some strides to do the things they need to do to be in compliance, but they the reserve has been urging them to do things that should have already been in place, like they need to have a last call for the fall. They need to stop serving giant buckets of beer at a certain time. Because I think one of the, one of the reasons that they're having issues drinking after we're supposed to be done is they don't have a last all, so people can finish up their drinks and then be done when they're supposed to be. Sure, if he's trying to encourage that, I don't think they've got it fixed and got set. But, but again, I'm not physically in there. I haven't had any conversations with any of the, any of the leadership there. You know, that's what's been given to me through our reserve.
Well, my thing is, how about postpone it for the next reading? And you can have a meeting with them and see what you can address through them as you as the chief. Instead of having the reserve speaking, then you can speak with them, and then if we can address most of the issues, then we can come back and get on them.
Would you, I will do that. Would you rather me do that, or would you rather have them come to the meeting to talk because it I don't know if one's better than the other. That'll be whatever.
Where I would be comfortable, like going with the chief and having that meeting. And just letting us know that the council knows there's been all these calls.
Yeah.
And we don't need that, but we'd want to give you that opportunity too.
Right.
And for the plan in place, maybe that's still
If I understand it right, if we go forward and accept it, then it's good for a year. They're good. But that could be, I think, what maybe, I'm putting words in your mouth, but maybe it's, we have a meeting, we talk about the issues that we've seen and say,
Yeah.
we preliminarily want to say yes, and we're gonna evaluate how the next year goes. And then if it's good, we'll keep it going. If it's not, then we'll leave it at that.
Yeah. So that would certainly send a, a good message to them, I think, you know, if council wants to postpone it until that conversation happens.
Yeah, I get your job.
And Mr. Mayor and Council, ABD will actually ask for what work has been done in order to communicate or to address those situations. Because although you do have the authority to not approve it, based on, I mean, based with that, I mean, it, it's really complicated unless there's a a serious, serious felony or issue to, to withhold it. So, so as Debbie stated, you know, we would send it back to ABD, but then ABD's gonna do, they're gonna ask another question. Has the city approached them? Have you discussed? Do you have a plan? Do they have that communication in place? Because most likely ABD would say, no, we're gonna go ahead and approve it because we want the city, the city needs to be, so being proactive, just as you've all suggested, would help that as well.
Well, I don't, I also don't want, like, them to get enough notoriety where they're being set up with, like, undercover folks and then lose their license because they have all these fines and things like that. So I want them to succeed.
Does, does it create a lot of complication for, for you, that, what, what we're doing right now? I mean, if, if we, okay, it's, it's not a
I mean, it, the, the, it's no complication for us. It's, it's, you know, it's a local business. And just as Councilmember Dominguez is saying, you know, I mean, your goal is to work with that local business for them to, you know, meet what's required of them. And again, I mean, it's having that conversation to protect them as well because they could find themselves in a situation, just the members of the meeting is speaking of, where they could have a, you know, ABD in there investigating, and then we've done nothing proactively to achieve that from, or not having that happen. So.
Sure.
The whole purpose is, is just like you're saying, to, to make it successful. So.
Right, absolutely, right. Yeah, but that, that conversation sounds like a good, good idea, right? Okay, so we'll proceed with, with that and with, with City Clerk Gertz's suggestion, then I'm gonna call for a vote for the approval of the consent agenda as a, as a vote. You can vote it down because we'll need to then have an amended motion, a motion with the amendment of tabling item C A for, for that item. So there's, there is a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as written with already the removal of item three C. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no.
No, no.
The, the, the motion dies four to zero. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? We've already removed item three C. Now with the amendment of tabling item C A.
And as well making the amendment to the minutes.
Yes, thank you.
I'll motion that.
Are we sufficient there with that motion?
Let's make, let's do this. Let's make the recommendation that we're going to separate the consent agenda. We're going to, the consent or the amendment would be, or the motion would be to remove, to separate three C from the consent agenda and have in the two items voted on separately.
Okay.
I motion to do what Lee just said.
So the, the motion, the motion is to approve the consent agenda minus item three C, which has already been tabled. And no, I'm sorry. First, you want a motion just to separate?
We're gonna separate them first.
Separate it.
Then we'll go into them separately, so then you can
The motion is to separate item three C A from the consent agenda.
Or three C.
We're gonna, we're gonna approve three C B, I think, the Flower Yards.
Yeah, but I, I thought you wanted just a fruit. Oh. Okay, never mind, never mind.
You don't
I thought you were wanting to get a key on.
There's, there's a motion to, to approve the consent. I think we'll, we'll try to make a cleaner way to do this moving forward. There's a, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda. We've already removed item three C. No, I'm sorry, I said it all around here. It's complicated stuff. There is a motion to remove or to separate item three C A from the consent agenda. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second to remove item three C A from the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we need to, correct me if I'm wrong here, Lee, but I believe we need a motion to approve the consent agenda that remains with the amendments in the meeting minutes.
There you go. I motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of the meeting minutes as discussed earlier.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Give me your amendment to your minutes before we can
Yes. Again, it is one sentence that says mayoral proclamation for junior achievement, McFerran Dominguez, five to zero. I think that just snuck in from another that wasn't a part of that meeting.
I'm gonna, I will put that all into the motion that's on the table. And, and then that way you've got your motion to amend the minutes and remove the mayor proclamation sentence. And then you've got a sec, you extend seconded, and now you can vote for all of your name.
Okay.
I'll put it all in writing for you, so.
Excellent. Okay, where were we? Did we vote for, did we vote for that? Have we just moved?
Now you need to vote for it.
Now we need to move, now we need to vote for it. So we're, we're now, you are now approving the consent agenda without item three C, which was already removed, and without
C A.
C A, three C A. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Okay, the motion carries four to zero. Uh, now we will tackle three C A. The liquor license for Flamas nightclub. Is there a motion to, it sounds like council wants to table that for the time being? If there's a motion to table that item, and it's a motion to table. Okay, there's item amendments.
I'm gonna make the recommendation within your motion. We're gonna motion to table and direct Chief Whirling to set a meeting. That way you have your, your directive within that motion. I got it. Yeah.
Okay, there's, I'll restate it as well. There's a motion to table the liquor license renewal for Flamas nightclub and have Chief Whirling reach out to, to them to have a discussion about the activity there. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero.
Deep breath.
Vendor voucher claims. Is there a motion to approve the vendor voucher claim list?
Motion to approve vendor vouchers claims list?
There a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? You can see the cost of the electric rate study that we just discussed with PHMD is there seventeen sixty? Any other questions? Okay, if there are no questions, there's a motion and a second to approve the vendor voucher claims list and the amount of three hundred nineteen thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and ninety-three cents. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries four to zero. Public comments and board correspondence. Are there public comments from the room? No, you know the drill.
I do. Good evening, Ken Brooks, representing, we lead West Liberty Economic Area Development, one nineteen East Third Street. In the spirit of this holiday season, I received an email tonight with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to share. This is on behalf of West Liberty's voluntary action.
Please do.
West Liberty, uh, West Liberty Voluntary Action Council wants to thank all of the individuals and groups that helped make the annual Christmas distributions successful. One hundred seventy-two families from the West Liberty School District received Christmas food boxes on December sixteenth and seventeenth. The families, many of which had children, numbered one hundred and five, that included two hundred and fifty-four children that received twice. Fruit sacks were delivered to fifty-one senior citizens as well. A total of four hundred and twenty-four coats were given away between Saint Joseph's Church and the West Liberty Public Library between December fourth and eleventh. Approximately forty coats in various sizes are still available right behind you here in the library. They'll be available for the entire season, and about eighty coats will be donated to the school district to give to students as needs arise. The event would not be possible without help from the Fall. Ministerial Association for Organizing the Church Drys for Winter Wear, Socks and Underwear. The local schools and chamber who The local schools and chamber who conducted food drives. Individuals and groups that donated food, toiletry and money to purchase supplies and toys. Star Tree gift donors, the West Liberty State Bank and Midwest One Bank for their Star Tree locations, the Rotary Coat Drive. The Aquarius for their help with the toys, First Church United for the use of their facility. People who phone recipients and schedule appointments, Lions and Rotarians who drove and helped with deliveries. Girl Scouts that bagged personal items, Silver Court students and others who helped with the drive up deliveries. And volunteers who sorted the food contributions and packed boxes. This community has so many generous volunteers who are willing to contribute wherever needed and help make a happier holiday season for many. So Priscilla Hasek sent out that email to many of the volunteers this morning. I thought it would be very important that we share that and put it on record. That our community is always here with members willing to to step up and and help and and give that living hand, so. Coats to all. And one of the programs not mentioned was Chief Whirling Shop with a cop program that also happened this month. Another amazing program funded by donations from from local citizens and and businesses. And serve a whole lot of kids there too. So thanks for the entire community.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for all the effort that you put into organizing many of those. Events and supporting them and promoting them. Uh it's definitely a generous community that we live in. So it's good to be a part of that. Thank you. Are there other public comments from the room? Are there any public comments on Zoom? I've actually never asked for that before, but I understand sometimes there are. Okay, city council, do you have uh public comments? If we start with you, uh Councilmember Martinez? Quiet moment. Don't say it. Not nothing, I know, okay, great. Uh our city manager Dave Hogan is on vacation this uh today. I didn't announce that earlier. He's not with us tonight. Uh city clerk Lee Gertz, public comments or correspondence?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have not received any correspondence.
Deputy City Clerk Sherry Hopeur. Okay, great. Uh I don't mean to say great, but just being okay. Excellent, coming right along then. We'll go to uh new business item six A, resolution two zero two two one two two zero dash three nine. This is setting the date for hearings on proposals to enter general obligation loan agreements. Um if council had a chance to read through those agreements, there it's separated into two parts. Uh one is two point six million dollars and then the next one is uh three hundred and fifty thousand. Those are both. Combined the loan for the Maximus Street project. Separated, I think, because the utility portion needs to be separated. Is that do I understand that correctly? Um and I think our city engineer Leo Foley is gonna update us with some very good news about the bids shortly. Uh but this is set. Basically, this is this this hearing needs to be set at a it's set at a pretty high number to make sure that we have the ability to borrow the money that we need to make the project. Happen. Uh this is a roll call vote. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Motion to approve resolution.
Is there a second? Motion and seconded to approve. Uh this resolution, any discussion? Questions? Okay, it's a roll call vote. Councilmember Schultz.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted um I. Councilmember Dominguez had actually contacted and she had a good question and. Did you wanna present your question?
Yeah, that that I think maybe I maybe I'm the only person that doesn't get it. But my question was, just looking at everything, are we, is this a a general obligation loan? Like that the city is taking for itself? And I asked, like, is it separate because one is the enter the utility enterprise? So I just wanted to to get kind of a little bit more of an explanation of how that works. And then also the like the um. What's it called? Oh, my gosh, my head is bolking. The interest, you know, how that works. Um I think it was like seven percent or something like that. So how that works?
Yeah, so um what you're looking at here in the um documentation you have is. Um the city is required to set a public hearing to entertain and throwing into a general obligation. Um the general obligation is just as the mayor communicated, um it's set at a maximum number. Um so therefore, um that number is allowing our engineers. Um to be able to take on bids, to be able to to set. Um ba- uh basically a a threshold, um so we don't exceed that. Okay, because that is also within our capacity. I'm gonna go back to um Mr. Summers from U M B had shared. Um that the the debt schedule and he talked about um borrowing for general obligation. And the purpose of this is is a capital improvement project that is a street. And that falls under general fund. And from that means is we will have to levy property taxes. And so the discussion we had with Mr. Summers is he stated, um if you remember that um that all the number of two and a quarter. Um that the city would look to increase on top of the eight ten and the other additional levies. Um not to go over that threshold because we will have to uh. Levy the property tax dollars to help pay for the general obligation note. So I did until we know the exact number, we wouldn't be able to communicate how that impacts. Um at that time, the other part of it is um during this is that the city is. Point by taking this, you're gonna have the public hearing and that's where you're going to start getting all those numbers. And then that's allowing us to get to the work. For that financial uh our finance uh program, our fine financiers. Um of U M B to moving on calling for the bonds. Um and so then that's when they start collecting. What the interest rate is gonna look like, how that's gonna break down. Then they will also bring recommendations to council on how we're gonna pay for that note. And though the note can be paid for through property tax a hundred percent. Or you can look at taking funds or using funds from other such as water, sewer, electric. Um tip and and just property tax and road use tax. So they'll give you recommendations on how we would. Pay for that. Um again, I'm sure from a fiscal point, you're looking at that as trying not to. Terribly increase more property tax on um the residents in our community, but at the same time, looking at what's most fiscal. Um in order to make that payment. Um I don't know if you have anything else, Leo, to add. I know you've done. You've been a part of a few of these with us, so but.
You you already had your financial advisor come in and say that. If it comes in within this number, he didn't see a problem getting it financed.
And I missed that meeting.
Came in and said he did and then. You you don't do the loan until after we have the public hearing and everything's set.
Okay.
We had a number up here that that we didn't wanna exceed and if you're gonna find out, we're gonna be well aware.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That helps a lot.
Yeah, I'm glad you asked a question because otherwise, you know, you're not the only one for sure, which was a question. So absolutely, no, just ask ask the question because. You know, then we then everybody learns. We all learn. Um so that's great. Are there is there are there any other questions, even if they?
Are stupid.
To you, I guess it's. Okay. No other questions or comments, then we'll proceed with the roll call vote. There's a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Um how do you vote? Uh I was gonna start on this side. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes, uh Councilmember McFerrin.
Yes.
Councilmember Dominguez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Martinez. Motion carries four to zero. We'll move on to six B, resolution twenty twenty-two twelve twenty dash forty, a resolution to set the date for a public hearing. On January third, twenty twenty-three. Uh to amend the city code. Uh for agricultural districts to include the verbiage animal hospital and or kennel. Um is there a motion to approve this resolution and a second and then we'll have some explanation? And seconded to approve uh. City Clerk Gertz, could you give us a an overview of this one as well, just to? Or or would that be?
I'm gonna pass it on to Deputy Secretary Cooper. She she managed this for us.
Um so what's happening is right now, we do not have this in our code to allow for. Like a boarding unit for dogs for when people go on vacation and stuff like that. Um. Right now, it's not in our code to allow that section, but out on Curry Street, if you're going out on Curry Street. There's all that land in between the two homes on the left-hand side. And the brothers wanted to do a family-run business back there where they can board animals for people. Um. They came up with the idea because they've wanted to improve the city. They've been thinking of ways to improve the city. And when they were going on vacation, they couldn't find anywhere to keep their dogs. Um Terry Gert was there as well during this meeting and he said that most of the time in small towns, you're gonna find it in the agricultural district. You're not gonna find it in the business or industrial district. It's just not feasible to have them there. Um so their plan right now is it would be a family-owned business. Um they would go ahead and board dogs. They have somebody who's gonna help them get it up and running. And then eventually, what they would like to do is put a like. Exercise area, kind of like a semi-form of a dog park essentially back there where they can take the dogs on walks. And people can bring their dogs and leave them there. And they would have somebody available twenty-four hours to be able to do that. So it. It is something that would be beneficial, especially in this area, because there aren't a lot of kennels. They went and visited other ones in other towns to see how they were run. And then they found somebody who came from another one that's willing to help them get started.
I've heard of several people who are looking for that kind of thing in town and there isn't anything, so it seems like an an improvement to me. Are there any questions or question about? About this at all? So this would amend amend the code itself to allow this um in any any area. Zoned agriculture, agricultural.
Correct.
Um which would allow them to do that.
Mr. Mayor also will address um off-street parking and um.
And signage.
And signage um in that as well, so. Again, so you don't have um major parking issues um for the business that's gonna impact. The rest of the street, the residential area around it. And likewise with the signage, so they don't have large um bright light signs going and. Keeping their neighbors away.
And they and the neighbors were notified and they actually went out further than the required two hundred feet. We actually did almost the entire street. And only two people came and the only concern that was there was the possibility of flooding in the hundred-year floodplain. Um and Building Inspector Gert did address that, that there would need to be some form of buildup around that to protect that.
So this has already gone through that whole process and the the planning and zoning uh commit recommends that council approve this.
I just wanted to make sure they understood they weren't actually approving.
Right, 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 setting the setting the public hearing, right. Yeah, so we'll we'll see where we'll see where that goes. Okay, there is a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Oh, please, yes.
The third, the third paragraph, um second line hearing of proposed pot of ordinance. I think that's supposed to say code. We'll correct that and mayor sign.
In the resolution. Yeah, in the resolution itself. Okay, that being said, is there any other discussion? If not, uh all those in favor say aye. All opposed say no. The motion carries four to zero. Uh and actually, I this says consent vote is is as a resolution. Do we need a roll call vote? Yeah, let's go ahead and do that then. I I was. I was noticing that. So actually, we need a roll call vote for that. Sorry about that. Um so for this resolution, twenty twenty-two twelve twenty dash forty. Uh with them, there's a motion and a second to approve. We'll do a roll call vote, starting with you, Councilmember Martinez.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero. We'll move on to seven C. This is uh city council discussion and consideration to enter into underwriter engagement letter. With U M B for general obligation bond twenty twenty-three. So this is related to. The item. Before uh. The agricultural district district change and I know that city manager Hogan has uh. Worked with this company a lot and had they've already come in and spoken, I understand, to to counsel that before my time. Um so his recommendation is that we that council enters into this engagement with U M B. Is there uh you get a chance to peruse that? Is there is there a motion to approve this engagement?
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve this engagement with U M B. Is there any discussion or questions?
Um and I'm probably misunderstanding this, but. I I know there is some coding with having to use local financial institutions. This is separate from that. And and that's been vetted and fine, right? Okay, so this is um basically it's a broker. And we're required by law to, before we can um have that broker go out and start working, even with our local financial institutions. Or anybody for any financial institutions for bonding, we have to enter into an engagement letter to give them the fiduciary power. In order to do so. Thank you.
There wouldn't be a a local option for this, I don't think, correct? Or could there be?
There could be. Um so previously, we've had um some of our general obligation and we did have our water. That um two of the local financial institutions were able to.
Okay.
Uh bid into that. Um sometimes the entire bond itself could be broken up through several different. Um financial institutions or maybe just with it again, that would be something for the financial advisor. They'll they'll explain how they put the bond together um with focusing on what's the best fiscal. Um as far as interest rate.
You're talking about the actual loan itself, but as far as the the role that U M B plays as a financial advisor for this type of bond.
Yeah.
That there's it's a specific type of company, I think, that that deals with that, right? So I don't think it's. Yeah, no, that makes sense. That makes sense. Uh any other discussion about that? Okay, there's a motion and a second to enter into this engagement with U M B for this letter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries four to zero. We'll move into item seven. Uh reports, I wanna thank the. The departments of the city for providing these reports. I don't know if council had a chance to read all these, but some very detailed reports here that are really helpful. I think for all of us to understand what's happening here. In the city. And I just wanna start by asking the council if there are any specific questions or. Clarifications. That you wanna bring up or or address regarding any of these reports.
Sure, although I don't see the. The record in here, but it has to do with the electrical utility.
We have a report from Electric this for this meeting, but that's that's.
But I I just wanted to make sure that it we touch upon it um in regards to. The impending weather that's possibly coming. And in the event that we lose power. Um I just wanted the general public to understand that um we're in a a really good position. To be able to bring our city up to um power. Because we do own our own municipality and um if we have to generate for ourselves in the event of something catastrophic. We have that ability to correct and we do it through the stock. And we do it through the stock, the reserve stock we have of the fuel.
Correct.
So, and that, that is something that is always monitored, right? Okay, so I just wanted to make mention of that because I, I did have a few people ask me in passing, nothing really, um, you know, firm, but on how that works. So I just wanted to go over that. Yeah, so, um, just to, based on what, uh, Councilmember McFerrin, as you're communicating, if we would fall into an emergency situation where we would lose power from the, from the grid, um, similar to what we've had happen in the past with Dorian, show would be the most recent one, I can tell you, or an ice storm. Um, then the city has the capacity to, uh, generate power, uh, to our city customers. Um, we maintain our diesel tanks at the level in order to meet that need, uh, if that would arise. Likewise, if there would be a situation, um, I'll give, in past history, um, the state of Texas, they had a significant ice storm and, um, the city had to generate, uh, power as well in order to help the grid, um, with that situation. So it's, it's a two-part. We can, uh, depend upon creating, uh, generating power for our own customers. And likewise, we can support the grid if needed, if someone else in our country within that grid agreement would have to have, uh, utility. And then, and then we would have access to order more diesel to fill that as we, and we're prepared to do that. And they do a generation report on a monthly basis and monitor, uh, the fuel level for that purpose.
That's great. Good thing to point out. Puts the city in a good position. Any other questions by council about any of these?
Department reports.
You guys have been working your butts off and I really appreciate it. Like all the departments have been very, very busy and I know there's a lot of changes because it's happening at City Hall and it's all too, kind of the keeping y'all busy. So I see you and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes. Onward.
In addition to our reports, um, uh, City Manager Hoagland asked that I just, uh, provide you an update as far as the budget timeline. Um, he asked that I share that he did meet with all of, um, this, he was able to meet with the supervisors. Um, with the exception, I know he's, um, going to schedule something with the, with the fire department to go through their budget. Uh, but they were able to meet and, um, get that prepared. So now that hands off to myself as the clerk, so I can, uh, create a draft budget to go over, uh, with City Manager Hoagland. So we are, we're staying on track with our timeline that was presented to you. Um, also, um, quickly, there is a snow emergency, um, effective Wednesday at ten P M. Until Friday at noon, we'll have that posted. Um, and then Deputy City Clerk's going to assist, um, myself with getting the rest of the, uh, news media outlets, uh, informed of that as well. So, um, I just knew of that.
Okay, great. Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
How, I wanted to ask, I think, um, uh, Superintendent Jergens is the one that's involved with the wastewater treatment plant report here. And I wanted to find out how impacted, um, we are, we were, we're going to be in regards to, um, the bolts that had broken off. I don't know if he, he's there.
It's here on the moon.
Exactly. Yeah, barely. Okay.
Unmute.
We still can't.
We can't hear you, uh, Craig, we need to unmute.
There we go. Basically, we had the south screw pump out of service for a week and a half. And that's when we had that first output come in and repaired that. Same day, we had Mississippi Valley Pump out of Quad Cities on site to work on the scum pump. And the next day, obviously, the north one had, basically the bolts had broken off that tensioner. So within the next three days, they had come on site and repaired that. So both screw pumps are up and running at present time. I believe just the age, because the bolts were installed, basically the tension bars, before I started work. So they were at least twenty-six years old, so. Between the vibration, the cold and hot, I think that's probably what caused them to break because they broke within two weeks of each other.
Hmm. Time to go. Great, excellent. Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Jergens? Or any other reports?
I also love reading Ally's report. I would say that because she put some good books in there.
There are book club choices for new students, right?
Are there, uh, department heads who would like to share anything specific about their reports? Okay.
Just a, just a final note, we had auditors in the office today. And I was to publicly thank, uh, Deputy Third Chopper and all of the staff. Um, I did allow them to have a pajama day, so it could be a little more relaxed, you know, with the auditors in the office. And the auditors were disappointed that they didn't get the memo, so. But everything went, um, very well today. We, we covered a lot of ground and, and, uh, and now they're headed back to Marshalltown. And so we'll continue to work on the audit, uh, within hopes to have it done here at the first of the year.
Per your recommendation, Lee, I wore my slippers tonight.
I appreciate you.
Um, I save the best for last. If we can hear from, from, uh, you, Leo Foley, I'm sitting in here.
All right, so we, we took bids today and we have five bidders, which for a project like that, that's very good. Um, a couple of good things. One is we bid this at the right time, working next spring. That means, um, the bidders can bid now and finish up their work that they might be doing right now. We got five bidders, um, very tight bids. So, uh, the, the low bidder was All-American at about one million four, four hundred and forty-seven thousand. And the highest bidder was U R at one point seven million. So those bids, what that means to you is the bids are tight, meaning all the bidders had the right stuff bid on and they're in the neighborhood. The only one that was a little off was B and K. We had it at one point nine. A couple of reasons. One, we don't want to be below bidder. We're not the contractor. So that is one reason. The second reason is, um, earlier this year, we had a high bid in Burlington and one in, um, Leclerc. And we were a little gun shy, not sure how with the, coming out of the pandemic, how, how quickly people react. And I think the road contractors are reacting a little quicker than we, we do a lot of wastewater work. We're still way up higher than what we anticipated. This was a great bid for the city. Um, we'll come back to you at the first meeting in January and give you our, um, um, the final recommendation, but we are going to recommend All-American. We have looked at everything already. They did not sign on the thing that they had seen the addendums. But one of the addendums had, I, the, a new bid sheet. So if he wouldn't have seen it, he wouldn't have used the right bid sheet. So he did use the right bid sheet. And then the second, the second one is he has emails back and forth with our design engineer talking about the second addendum. And really, the reason B and K puts that on our form is to protect the city. What we don't want to do is have you award something and have a contractor come back and say, hey, wait a minute, I didn't even see that last addendum. So he's already put back in writing to me that he saw the addendum. I think we're all clear there. Um, all as we'll do is, um, we put our, it's just a formality really. We put it all on our spreadsheet so we can see it. Sometimes there's a little half errors or something like that. We'll take off care of all that tomorrow and send you a recommendation back to you.
Excellent. Now, just to clarify, one point four and change for, that's for the road work, the concrete work. The, the electric, I think, is, is an additional on top of that, right?
That is right. There's, there's going to be a separate bid that B H and G does for you.
Right.
For the electrical utility. And I want to say the estimate for that was around three hundred fifty thousand dollars. This, this bid has the lighting in it and all the wiring for the lighting. It does not have the transformers or the, um, relocation of the power.
Yeah.
The other thing is we did put, and at one time we had a alternate sidewalk that goes, um, down Maxim and where the first street is.
Oh, where?
Where this, where?
Where?
Miller, where we tied in the Miller, Miller that sideline. That's in this bid. But last time I was here, we talked about a sidewalk along Columbus.
Right.
That is not in this.
Okay.
So what, what happened?
That was an extra, what, fifty-seven thousand, right?
We're not sure yet.
Okay.
We'll work on it.
It was about twenty-five.
I was like, the mayor's going to go big that. No, what, what, what we will do now, though, is we'll, assuming the city approves this in January, then we'll go through contracting with the contractor, get the contractors awarded. And then we come back to them and say, hey, here's some extra work we're looking at. And then we go back and forth on that.
Via change of process.
Via change of, yeah.
Yeah.
I do have a couple of other little reports, if you don't mind.
Sure.
One is the wastewater treatment plant. We do have, we did do a facility plan for you and recommended a lot of baseline improvements that need to be done at your wastewater treatment plant. Because the things that are happening now will continue to happen based on our results. It's, your plant needs work. And, and really the work he talked about is the kind of things it needs, not big work, but all kinds of little work all throughout. Just to bring it up to speed, more or less, and we call it baseline improvements. Plus, there's some bottlenecks, where the flow bottlenecks and stops, and we wanted to fix those. So I've talked to City Manager, Manager Hoagland about that. I think in the beginning of the year, we'll be back in front of you on that. That's all I had to say.
Excellent. Thank you, Leo. Mr. Simon, did you want to share anything about the, the, uh, the bid and all? It's good you're here today. Mr. Simon and Mr. Simon, I think I should say. So.
I, I mostly just wanted to listen, but since you gave me a chance, I'll, I'll kind of echo what he said on the time of year forbidding, just for educational thing, I guess. Where we finished up our construction season and then right now, everybody's kind of competing to start filling up the next year. And, you know, just throwing a number out there, if you have any bid this project in July, it'd probably be a hundred thousand higher, a hundred fifty thousand higher, just, just guessing on a number. But there is a real sense each winter where people are trying to fill back up. And so it tends to be more better this time of year. So just kind of amending at least.
Good, great.
It's good to hear that we're going local.
Yeah.
There's a big difference.
Absolutely.
Another part of our, that, that makes it easy. A lot of our betting sometimes is that the contractor's coming from somewhere else. What, what are they doing? Why did they get the low bid? How did they get the low bid? So this one, they've done a lot of projects, we know. We know what we're getting.
And as you know, it's very local for me, so.
How?
We'll have one landowner that won't be a complainer.
Uh, how frustrating with that event. It went to somebody else.
You don't know. I've been, I've been estimating for twelve years. I have never been so nervous. And I'm joking.
I've had an engineer.
He lived right on that street.
City of Bednor, who I do a lot of work with, like, what the heck?
I was telling my wife today, if anybody else ends up at this job, I'm going to be fifteen years from now, I'm going to have grandkids riding bikes up and down on that street. And I'll be thinking about how I lost.
But we're glad, glad it came anywhere it was. So, okay, uh, I think that's all for tonight. Is, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There a second? Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. The meeting is adjourned. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.